On the Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, Faribault City Council Meeting to order, our first item is roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Dumbuia?
Yeah.
Ross?
Here.
Rowan?
Here.
Vans Luce?
Here.
Teal?
Here.
Mayor Spooner?
Here.
And pledge allegiance.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our second item is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Ross, second by Rowan, all those in favor saying if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Next item is a presentation for the Safe Summer Kickoff Proclamation. Right chief, I can get you. One camera and all of us up there. The Office of the Mayor of City of Faribault Proclamation. Whereas the Faribault Police Department is sponsoring a community event, an engagement opportunity at North Alexander Park called Safe Summer Kickoff on May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Whereas the Safe Summer Kickoff coincides with the last day of school for Faribault Public Schools and is focused on their students, families, and having a safe summer. Whereas, all members of the community are invited to attend this event, engage with Police Department, participate in interactive activities, interact with Police Department equipment, and observe police-led demonstrations. Whereas, numerous local businesses and individuals have donated money and materials and time to provide Safe Summer Kickoff attendees with free food, entertainment, one hundred and fifty bicycles, and safety equipment to be given away. Whereas, we encourage all citizens to attend and celebrate the year end, the year, end of our year, school year, on the onset of a safe summer. And now, therefore, I, Tom Swimmer, Mayor of Faribault, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, a safe summer kickoff day in the City of Faribault.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for the proclamation, we certainly invite, send an invitation to everyone, all members of the community, please, for the word. This says, we have one hundred and fifty bicycles to give to kids. You can register to get a bike right now through our online application. So, download and after you register, you get bikes, free food, free games, and t-shirts to give. Yeah, and it's gonna be busy at the car grounds.
On to item number four, approval of the minutes of May thirteenth, City Council. Yes.
Make a motion to approve. May thirteenth, City Council.
Second.
Motion by Dambuia, second by Vans Luce, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Request to be heard, were there any up there? Consent agenda items. Items six A through six H, would anybody like anything polled for discussion? Being none, I'll take a motion.
Mayor Veratchik, or Mayor Spooner. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items six A through six H.
Second.
Aye. Ross, second by Teal, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number seven, public hearings. The first one is ordinance twenty twenty five, annexing certain land from Wells Township into the city on its second reading. Harry Davis will give that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, and, uh, for this particular item, this is the second reading of this ordinance. It's annexing land just next to our northern industrial park. Uh, there have been no substantial changes to the ordinance since you have last seen it. We're recommending approval. Uh, alongside this is the summary publication of that ordinance, so that summary publication, just to note very quickly, requires, uh, I believe it's a three-fifths vote at minimum in order for that to pass.
Any questions? Being none? Nope. First, we got an open public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve or to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion to open public hearing by Ross, seconded by Rowan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in our public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this matter? Being none, come forward, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Don't move. Second.
Ross, second by Vans Luce. I'm by saying aye.
Aye.
This is an ordinance, I will entertain a motion.
Spooner?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty five dash two.
Ross to approve ordinance.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Dumbuia?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Vans Luce?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye. Don't move.
Second. Vans Luce?
Second.
Motion by Vans Luce, second by Teal, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, resolution twenty twenty five dash one forty-four, order improvements, approve plans, and establish a bid date for twenty twenty five miscellaneous street construction projects, contract twenty twenty five dash four five, Mark Duchesne, the director.
Thank you, Mayor Spooner, members of the council and the public. Uh, before your night is a public hearing for our miscellaneous street reconstruction improvement projects. We've kind of truncated this project, we're gonna do the public hearing and order the plans and approve the plans and set the bid date all in one. Um, there are some special assessments tied to this project, um, but they're being done at the proposer's request, so they waived all their rights to the hearings, but we're still gonna have the public. Our twenty twenty five miscellaneous street reconstruction improvement contract, it's actually three street segments, uh, construction, the new construction of Amber Court, which is tied to the Riverview Ridge Platte Project, um, and then the reconstruction and realignment of two intersections, uh, Grant Street, Park Avenue, uh, on the north side of Trunk Highway sixty, and then the Y intersection of Old Forest Street and Division Street by Crown Court Conceal. So the first segment to discuss here is that Y intersection by Crown Court Conceal. Um, as you can see, the proposal here is to realign Old Forest Street as it intersects with Division Street, to hook it in to become more of a right angle with that intersection. Uh, following the county redoing the, uh, Old Forest Street and Cassaf Forty-Eight or Lindale Avenue intersection here a number of years ago where they made that a three-quarter intersection, where you can no longer go across the intersection, um, traffic on Old Forest Street drastically decreased, we did traffic counts a year or two after that project was completed, and there's three to four times the amount of traffic doing the movement from Division Street to Old Forest Street, and there's a quarter of the amount of traffic on that segment of Old Forest Street. So rather than having to pull up to that intersection off of Division Street and crank your head at that goofy Y angle, we'll actually make Division Street the through movement, where a majority of the movements are, and then if you're coming westbound on Old Forest Street, you'll actually pull up to a stop condition at an intersection there at a ninety-degree angle for most vehicles, um, so you have better sightlines, better safety. Also worked to reconfigure that intersection after discussions with Crown Court Conceal's management. They don't have a lot of truck traffic that goes out that way, but we've designed that intersection so a truck can make that right turn out there, or we're gonna put in some drive over curb and then drive over sidewalk there, so most cars will be constrained to a normal width intersection, but for those larger vehicles that do every once in a while need to make that movement, we have accommodated them. Second street segment is that construction of Amber Court. Uh, this is just a screenshot of the area, so we're west of Lindale Avenue, south of the Stone Ridge Development there. Um, the Klebergers have purchased this parcel here. Klebergers have purchased this parcel here for development of a single-family home. Uh, as you recall, through the planning processes, they did not have legal frontage, so in order to get them legal frontage and to get them through the planning process, um, we came to an agreement to construct Amber Court off of Crystal Lane here. Um, we'll construct Amber Court and terminate in a cul-de-sac. This provides frontage for not only the Riverview Ridge parcel, but also the adjacent parcel, which is currently addressed off of Lindale Avenue. So they, we've worked with the adjacent property owners, they've worked out a cost-share agreement to do special assessments for a portion of the street work. As you recall, the city agreed to pay for the portion of street utility works for Amber Court up to the plat boundary of the Stone Ridge Platte, which should have been done at the time of that plat, but was not. But this is just a simple street cul-de-sac and utility construction to provide the development for Riverview Ridge and the adjacent. A little bit of extension of Crystal Lane over here, and then the construction of a cul-de-sac, um, two driveways, one for the neighbor property and one for the Kleberger property. I had one more. Uh, so the third project in here is the realignment of Grant Street, so this would be Grant Street on the north side of Trunk Highway sixty. Um, here's the Hy-Vee Grocery Store on the left-hand side of the page, and if you recall a number of years ago, we purchased, the city purchased four twenty-two Park Avenue for the purpose of this realignment. So here we are now, we are gonna pull back the Grant Street intersection at Park Avenue from Trunk Highway sixty, provide some stacking distance here for cars to stop at that stop sign to make turns onto or across Highway sixty, similar to what was done when the Aldi Development happened on the south side of the road. So we, we actually were able to get a little bit more separation with this project than that previous one, but it's simply utilizing that parcel that we purchased. Total estimated project costs are just under five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for all three road segments. I will mention, previously when we initiated this project, First Avenue between Third and Forest Street or between the Rice County parcels and the Faribault Police Station was included in this project, um, we're still waiting for the county and that whole project to come together on that Rice County block, so rather than move forward with improvements, not knowing what may to do, we did pull that street out. Um, if, if decisions are made in a timely manner, we may add it to one more project that we're working on right now, or that may just get delayed another year. Total project cost five hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly, mostly funded out of our street improvement funds, our water and sewer and stormwater utility funds, and then you can see that portion of special assessments, which again, not our typical special assessment process, these have been agreed to by petition and waiver, so the applicant and the neighbor have waived all their rights to the hearing. Pending approval of all the items tonight, we are looking at a bid date of June eighteenth, um, to award construction the following week. Uh, we anticipate construction to start July, August, with final completion in November. Couple of these projects are in proximity to some ongoing state and county projects, we're trying to delay a little bit to make sure we don't have the whole world tied up at the same time in the same area. This will likely be a second half construction season. With that, I'll take any questions and then ask you to hold a public hearing and then take action on the items before you.
Any questions for Director Duchesne? Being none at this point in time, I'll.
This question.
There's a public hearing.
There's a public hearing.
No, this is a public hearing. I'll make a motion to open public hearing.
Don't move. Second.
It's fine. Motion by Teal, second by Ross, all those in favor to open public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone like to speak on this matter? Being none, this is your last chance, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Teal to close public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are out of public hearing, I will now make a, accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one four four.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ross, second by Vans Luce, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Our third public hearing is ordinance twenty twenty five dash six, dedication of the public right-of-way along Grant Street, once again.
Thank you, Mayor Veratchik, see now you got me doing it. Spooner. Before your night is an action related to the one we just passed, and this is dedicating that portion of that four twenty-two Park Avenue that the city purchased as public right-of-way for the purposes of realigning Grant Street. So the area hatched in blue here is the portion of the lot that was purchased, the whole lot is actually all of this, um, outlined here, but just a portion that will be dedicated to right-of-way. The remaining portion will be saved for a, a future action. Um, we, we've talked to some folks who are interested in possibly purchasing it for a single-family construction, um, we've talked to some folks who are looking at a bigger picture, maybe acquiring some adjacent parcels and doing a bigger thing. At this time, there's no concrete plan for what that additional lot will be done, but at this time, we are dedicating the portion that we need, um, via ordinance to dedicate the right-of-way rather than plating, because, like you said, we've got some different things going out there about what may become that lot, but we're gonna platter it now, only have to replat it or combine with something else later. So before your night is the first reading of ordinance twenty five oh six, dedicating that public right-of-way along Grant Street.
Questions for Director Duchesne? Being none, I'll take a motion to open public hearing.
Don't move.
Motion by Vans Luce, second by.
Aye.
This matter. Got a lot of people here for nothing. Uh, seeing nobody come forward, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Close public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes, we are out of public hearing. Approve resolution, ordinance twenty twenty five.
Don't move.
Motion by Teal, second by Rowan, all those in favor of order.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Dumbuia?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Vans Luce?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye.
All right, on to items for discussion. A, we have one, two, three, four, I believe it is here, six items, one presentation correct. Item A, Mighty Fine Coffee, one twenty-seven Fourteenth Street Northwest, we have a comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, preliminary and final plat changes, ordinance variance, and a conditional use permit. Harry Davis, once again.
Yeah, so we have a, uh, rather complicated project, uh, that'll do my best to. It's, uh, it's, it's a bunch of different requests to go forward. Um, they're all made, uh, by Steve Underdahl on behalf of the company owner's business, uh, Mighty Fine Coffee. His location is one twenty-three, one twenty-seven, Fourth Street Northwest, um, and there's a, a large list of requests that we're going through tonight. And that amendment, preliminary filed by. Altamir Construction, uh, drive-through coffee, uh, restaurant. So here's the location here on the, on the north side of, of downtown, um, right next to, uh, River Bar and River. And the properties that are outlined in red are the two properties. So the comprehensive plan is to take this from what is called established residential neighborhood, uh, sort of in conjunction with the rest of the block and, uh, going south towards downtown, taking, uh, going from that to commercial residential mixed use. Um, the first set of variances are for lot size and impervious surface, lot size is needed because of less later on from C one to C two, you need twenty thousand square feet of lot area in order to build that, and then the surface is there. That, uh, pervious surface is needed for the, uh, buildout of the property will be fifty-two percent, where the maximum, you know, rolls is twenty-five percent for a property that's planned. Zoning is to go from C one to C two, um, that's our to combine these two properties that I showed earlier. Conditional use permit is for a drive-through, specifically a drive-through in C two, because it's a, a drive-through in Shoreland. The variances, the last two variances are for parking setback and for stacking spaces. So, uh, you know, again, the properties are outlined in red, on the left-hand side would be where they would, uh, change from established residential neighborhood, which is this gold yellow color, uh, the left-hand map to a more redder colored. On the right-hand side is actually the zoning map, and of those properties that are kind of this same red color would end up being a little more lighter. Left-hand side would be the final plat, so the, you know, both the properties combined, um, and then on the right-hand side is actually the site plan that was brought forward by the appkin. For the comprehensive plans, staff does not see any issues, uh, except the, uh, crossroads between two major arterial, uh, for the city. Variances, uh, we do feel like, uh, for lot area and impervious surface coverage, that that meets the practical difficulty. Inar has supported, uh, this part from below, which is actually pretty rare when it comes to pervious surface. For zoning, uh, we haven't identified any issues from staff, and we do believe that it meets all the zoning criteria. Lots, uh, we don't see any immediate issues, there are some small things for us to figure out, uh, those have become conditions of the people in that residential area. For the conditional use permit, we do feel that it meets the criteria for drive-through, uh, the performance standards are going to be, uh, here to by the applicant, and there will be a limitation on the, uh, for that drive-through, um, thinking of the nearby residences. The variances, you know, again, um, in this particular situation for parking setback as well as for stacking spaces, we do have a practical difficulty and criteria for that variant. This is, I think, perhaps in the last, uh, few years, the best iteration of redevelopment for the site, it's happened through numerous times, and we've been able to work with the applicant, and then we've been, uh, another, uh, manager within the city. Do feel like that there's a lot of work that is done as to this point. The planning commission, uh, we did hear some public comment at the public hearing, all in support of both the use itself as well as the business. The commission did recommend approval of all of the, uh, ordinance, the U.C. in Riverview. Uh, Commissioner White did dissent due to, not just with the C two zoning, but also with the zoning requirement. However, we do feel that it meets all of our zoning requirements and criteria, and so we are working forward on all those resolutions, and one, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from staff?
From staff? Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just for clarification on, I'm looking at the site plan, and it looks like, is there one or five parking spaces on top of the U of the drive-through?
Uh, Councilmember Ross, no, there, there aren't any parking on the north side, it's all pretty much on the south side and then a, a, a west end.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, that was, my second question was if there was any parking spaces. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'd like to make a quick statement. Dave, you want?
Steve Underdahl, uh, is, uh, I've actually been involved in three or four other businesses. That, uh, report was very good, questions at Dave?
All right.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one three two.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Vans Luce on resolution twenty twenty five, comprehensive plan amendment to tie certain property on the corner of Second Avenue Northwest and commercial residential to mix. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes, on to item number.
Mayor Spooner? I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one three three.
I'll second.
Resolution twenty twenty five. Variances on lot area and impervious surface coverage. Fourteenth Street Northwest.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number three, ordinance twenty twenty five.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash four.
Second.
Ordinance twenty twenty five.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Dumbuia?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Vans Luce?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number four.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one three four.
Second.
I have a motion by, taken by Barnes to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one thirty-four. And our final plats for Mighty Fine Coffee.
Aye.
Motion passes, item number five.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one three five.
Second.
C two and Shoreland Overlay District. Three Fourteenth Street Northwest.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number six.
Approve resolution twenty twenty five dash one three six.
Second.
Ross, second by Dumbuia. Five dash one thirty-six, approve variance for parking area setbacks and drive-through stacking spaces at one twenty-seven and one twenty-three Fourteenth Street Northwest, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. On to item number B, Malika Autobody, one ninety Twentieth Street Northwest vacation and preliminary file. And, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so the item in front of you, um, is actually three different requests, uh, from Malika Autobody. Um, the appkin is, uh, again, actually Steve Underdahl representing Malika Autobody. Um, it's at nineteen Twentieth Street Northwest, and it's, uh, actually located just north of, uh, Quick Trip, out there on the north side. Um, the appkins have acquired the, uh, neighboring property to the north and northwest, and so they are, uh, looking to expand their business and move into that part of the property, uh, so they'll need to, uh, vacate a drainage and utility easement that was done, uh, when they platted their, their current property. They would, they will need a plat to combine those two properties to facilitate the expansion itself, and then a conditional use permit to amend, uh, their current conditional use permit for major auto repair in C two and Shoreland. The location of that to be vacated easement is this hatched area that you can see on this, on this diagram in front of you. These are the preliminary and final plats, so the intent is to combine the lots. And then this very last set of diagrams is a site plan and some building elevations and building plans. What they want to do, it's a alignment building for expanding their business. The vacation staff sees no issues with it for the preliminary and final plat. We also don't see any issues with the submittals. In this particular situation, because it's expanding a commercial use, typically we would look at parkland dedication, but we are currently not as a part of this. The math just shakes out that way. I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like me to. The conditional use permit, the criteria amended by this proposal and the DNR does support their conditional use permit. At Planning Commission, there was no public comment and the Planning Commission did unanimously approve of this. So, in summary, it meets zoning criteria and requirements. Staff is recommending that you approve the resolutions in front of you. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for? Applicant want to say anything? Alright, I'll entertain a motion on the, item number one.
Mayor.
Excuse me, is there any further discussion?
Mayor Spooner? I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-5.
Second.
I have a motion by Ross, second by Vance Luce on ordinance 2025 to vacate a portion of drainage and utility easement located at 190 Twentieth Street Northwest. They were saying the fact.
Councilmember Barnes?
Hi.
Jimboya?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Rowan?
Aye.
Vance Luce?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Mayor Spooner?
Aye.
On item number two.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-137.
Second.
I have a motion by Ross, second by Teal to approve Resolution 2025-137. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve 2025-138.
Oh, yes, second by Barnes. To approve Resolution 2025-138, approval of a conditional use. They were saying the five was saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number C, Blaze at 1 11216 First Street, First Avenue Northwest.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I do apologize for that typo.
It's only in the one page.
Yeah.
Mary, it's in your memo.
The, the resolutions are still all correct. But, yes, so the item in front of you is a set of conditional use permit and, and some variances submitted by David Blaze for his property out there at 1216 First Street Northeast. It's for a 4,000 square foot accessory structure. The property in question is, you know, kind of located on, on sort of, as it goes out of town, Highway 60. This is the property itself. It's about 7.3 acres. And these are some of the building plans submitted by the applicant. On the left-hand side is a site plan and you can see where the, kind of this giant gray box is. It's pretty close to the road. On a better image, you might be able to see that it's kind of a flatter part of the site. And then the two diagrams on the right-hand side are the building plans themselves. The request in front of you is one for the conditional use permit. So we do have an allowance within our code to increase the accessory structure up to 1,080 square feet with a conditional use permit, a 25% increase. So that is the first item in front of you. The next three are a series of variances. So one is to allow the location of the garage to be closer to the street than the house. There's a particular requirement that the garage be either behind or to the side of the house. The next two are related to the size of the structure itself. So going from 1,080 square feet to 4,000 square feet would be one such variance. It's about 2,920 square feet. And then the other would be a principal use or structure area versus accessory use or structure area. So in this particular case, the amount of living area is about 2,700, 2,800 square feet. And the amount of accessory use would be 4,900, you know, sort of around there, square feet. So the difference being 2,140 square feet. The APK has stated that the garage is for personal use and that because it's a larger lot on the outskirts of the city in a more rural area, that a larger accessory structure is perhaps more appropriate. You know, generally with the, the conditional use permit and the first variance, the first variance being the location of the garage itself, staff sees no issues with the conditional use permit. It's meeting the criteria there. And for the first variance, its location, it's actually the flattest part of the site. And so in a lot of ways, it really makes sense for that to be where they develop this garage rather than on the steep slopes found elsewhere on the site. So there's definitely a practical difficulty there. For the next two variances, the size of the structure itself and accessory versus principal uses in, in the area there. In staff's point of view, it doesn't meet practical difficulty. We can't find a, a particular reason why it, it meets the practical difficulty standard. Accessory structures and the uses are meant to be subordinate compared to the principal structure. So having a larger than normal lot is just not grounds for practical difficulty. The Planning Commission did, at their public hearing, receive no opposition to the requests from the general public. The Planning Commission did actually recommend approving all the requests. So there was a period of time where staff had to bring back Resolution for approval for those other two variances. And so they, they did move that forward. Commissioners Ackman and Green did dissent, agreeing with staff's review of the requests. You know, in summary, staff does support the conditional use permit and the, and the one variance, but doesn't for the other two variances. But Plan Commission is recommending granting all the requests. So, the recommendations in front of you would be to approve all three resolutions in front of you. Plan Commission did, in addition to these recommendations, ask City Council to direct staff to look into some sort of code ordinance amendment that would allow larger accessory structures on larger lots that are found within the city. You know, I, I suppose specifically for Resolution 2025-141, if you do decide to grant that, we would recommend as city staff, that City Council give us some direction and guidance so that we can then go back to Planning Commission and sort of mull over maybe next steps as to what we could do for amending the code to allow some of these situations to be by right or as appropriate. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for educational purposes here, Mr. Davis, how does this affect future landowners of this piece? Cutting it up for different lots?
Sure, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great question, Councilmember Ross. So the lot itself is actually, it's got quite a bit of topography. And so it might make, in some situations, a little bit more difficult to, to develop. There's quite a bit of it, and I'll go back to that particular image. There's quite a bit of it that's behind some existing homes that are along Highway 60. There is maybe some frontage onto 12th Avenue Northeast. But if you look at where it's actually constructed versus where that right-of-way is, it's not really lining up. It's really there to serve that insurance that's, that's right next to them. It really does make it, if you try to, if you try to subdivide it using the existing frontage that they have along Highway 60, it does make it a lot more difficult. You would not be able to have that accessory structure be on its own lot. You need a accessory structure to a principal structure in this case.
Correct, yep.
So, you know, it, it really might depend on how they split it up. But generally, yes, I do feel like that there, there is some concern there. But the APK has, has at, at least indicated that they don't, they're, they're not interested in splitting.
Yeah, I, I was, I'm, I assume they weren't, but I was just wondering. Their next owner, whatever. And then just one more question. The, the proposed structure is going to go just a little bit to the south and east of the home. Will they use the same driveway, the horseshoe driveway and extend it to the back of this accessory building? I mean, they won't be coming in on the front, will they?
No, no, Councilmember Ross. So they, they will be using their existing driveway. And I do apologize for this particular image. There is kind of like this dashed black line that connects their existing driveway to where this garage would be. The, the, the garage doors would actually
Okay, I see that now.
There's, I think it's like a 20-foot or 25-foot elevation difference between Highway 60 and where this structure would be. So it, it just would not be feasible to
Right, no, no, that's good. And then did the Planning Commission recommend any screening on that south side of the building, you know, between?
No. And, and that kind of played into some of staff's recommendation there, just because they are sitting pretty high. There's likely not too, too much of an issue and there's a lot of existing foliage along that slope too that would act as a
It's unnatural. Okay, thank you, no more questions.
Yeah, applicant would like to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
Oh, I was just gonna say like, we are on our own septic and well. The odds of that being split down the road is probably
Thank you. Listen, make a quick comment. I did watch the original Planning Commission works. I did, they were nearly divided more on the size of the lot and frankly, by City Council has let it go. Alright, at that point, we'll take a look at item number one, Resolution 2025.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-139.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Vance Luce to approve Resolution 2025-139, approve of CUP accessory structure located at 1216 First Street Northeast. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Item number two, Resolution 2025.
Mayor Spooner? I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025.
Yeah, second by Barnes to approve Resolution 2025. Approval of a variance for placing an accessory structure in the front yard at 1216 First Street Northeast. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passes. No. Question on item number three.
Mayor Spooner, so I think if, if Council does seek to, to grant that particular resolution, it would be really helpful for staff to have some guidance and direction as to where you would like it to go. Because approving, approving this request and project, I think, is going to result in a lot of interest to do very similar things elsewhere within the city. And I think if, if we do start moving that way, I think city staff needs to figure out, okay, how does that fit within code? Otherwise, you're going to see very similar variances in a lot of this particular subject.
Okay. Something you want tonight? Yes.
We, we can put this on the June 3rd work session for, for more discussion pending your action tonight.
This point in time, I'll take a Yes.
So Attorney Riggs, do you have any thoughts on this last piece?
No, I think Harry explained it very well. If you have an issue in your code that should be looked at if you are moving forward with this, we did discuss this earlier in staff meetings. So beyond that, no, I really don't have anything further.
Great, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, one more question. No living quarters in this, correct?
Councilmember Ross, no, no.
Are they technically illegal under the code or could he add them later or what? Where are we on something like that?
Councilmember Ross, if I'm remembering correctly off the top of my head, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which you might kind of be getting towards, there is a maximum for that.
But this is an accessory dwelling unit. Unit.
Yeah, this, this is just an accessory structure, a garage, a very large garage, but a garage. So the, right now, I don't believe that there's any plumbing in it. I don't see any like kitchenette or any, or any bathroom or, or I have not heard from the applicant that they have any intention of doing that.
Mayor Spooner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-141.
Second.
Motion by Ross, second by Teal on Resolution 2025-141. Proven variances for larger accessory structures that allowed and more accessory use and structure area. Use and structure. 1216 First Street Northeast.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion pass. Onto the next item, ordinance 2025-7. And this is your night.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is actually a, a pretty exciting little ordinance amendment to bring forward to you. It's to potentially allow proof of parking in commercial districts. This is something that city staff have been looking at for a while and in some ways have been looking at for various projects. But we've had some projects recently that are redevelopment projects where our ordinance requires them to put in an extreme amount of parking compared to what they actually use and that they know that they use. And so what we're trying to get at is, is something where non-residential uses that are located in commercially zoned properties or on commercially zoned properties would be allowed to do proof of parking up to 30%. So that means that they would only be required to build or to have at least 70% of what they need per our parking standards, our parking ratios. And then the 30% could be built at a later time or as determined by staff. You know, like a really quick diagram just to kind of explain it. So, you know, this is retail. These are the number of spaces that they provide. It's, you know, just hitting 70%. You know, later on, we determine, okay, well, now people are parking on grass. They're sort of expanding this parking area. Zoning violation gets issued. And that's when staff would be able to step in and say, look, you know, you need to build the rest of your parking. And that would be kind of the way that we anticipate this moving forward. That could also be done also on the front end. From the comprehensive plan side of it, you know, this does meet a lot of our goals and policies in terms of balancing between city and sort of community interests versus property, private property interests. For zoning, we do feel like it meets all of the criteria, all the, all the findings that we've been able to show. It supports a lot of redevelopment projects and small businesses. From Planning Commission, we didn't receive any public comments at the public hearing. Plan Commission did generally support the amendment. Commissioner White did dissent due to some concerns of proof of parking not being, not being a conditional use permit. So Plan Commission and State Council not being able to review it in any particular situat- situation. And then general concerns of underparking for commercial property. But in summary, the, the proposed zoning text amendment doesn't meet our comprehensive plan and zoning criteria. So we are recommending that you So we are recommending that you approve Ordinance 2025-7. Happy to take any questions.
Yes, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. This applies only to commercial development, not residential, correct?
Yeah, Councilmember Ross, yes. It's specifically written not to include residential uses. It's only non-residential.
Thank you.
I just have one. So in other words, what we're doing, and I think you did a very good job of explaining it. So we're just kind of letting them get their foot in the door, 70% of the parking. This is our ordinance, you need to match.
I think it opens up the door to future problems.
Any part of you, but I think it'll maybe be a little business friendly where we can get a business.
Taken complaints on this issue previously that you're aware of?
I just think it's a good way to be business friendly.
Yeah, I can jump in there. So we do have a development currently going through our processes. They're actually a building permit at this point. That's for the Maticeck Implement Dealership on the west side of town. They, under our code, would be required to provide like 70-some spaces. When you take a look at what their operations are like, they really need close to like 30. And then maybe some extra spaces in order to buy parking for those that are interested in buying particular implements. You know, this would get them down to 50. And that's pretty significant when we're talking about making sure that they have enough room for their product and they have enough room in order to expand their building in the future. So we're hopefully not stringing them too much, but we are requiring a certain amount of parking per our parking ratios. That's just one recent example that we run into.
Right, but wouldn't the proper mechanism be to clean up the ordinance? Seems like a Band-Aid. Attorney Riggs, you got any thoughts?
This is something we discussed again with staff today. I think it's a tool that allows you to get there. I understand Councilmember Rowan's point. I don't think in all these types of aspects that you can be perfect with your ordinance, but it is a solution that gets us to a point where there's more flexibility for staff, the developer and the council to put something in place. So for that purpose, after discussing it with Mr. Davis, I think it makes sense at this point to utilize this for now.
Mayor Spooner, if I could also just jump in. So there is a mechanism within our code that also says, well, you know, if staff reviews it and determines, well, you know, this is this kind of use, and we know from, you know, three other examples that they use all of their parking and they want to provide less, we can say, no, you need to provide your parking. If they want to appeal that, they can go through the whole appeal process, which would be planning commission. So there is a mechanism to kind of check and balance it a little bit.
I don't know, I still don't buy it because you're saying that it should be this, but we'll make an exception for that. But if it's not right, then we'll hold you to the other standard. It just seems like a Band-Aid.
And I will jump in again for Councilmember Rowan. I understand exactly what you're saying, but this is the tool to get you because we can put numbers in the code, and it's not perfect for every business that's out there. And I don't think you can do, you will have too much language in your code. This gives the tool to staff to either deal with it, you know, in some capacity to say, no, this usage has been shown to only require this, or this usage, no, will not allow us to reduce it. Staff will have to say it goes up to a higher level. The business can then appeal that to you as a council or through planning commission. Again, it's a tool. It gets you closer to a standard that I think is workable for multiple situations without going in there and saying, we need 75 for this, 65 for this, 55 for this. I don't think you can do that. I think that's an over, wow, it'd be an overregulation of the code in putting that language. So I think this is a very usable tool. And for that purposes, after discussing it with Von Berg and Mr. Davis, I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, I feel like I like the flexibility part of it. But just like, we don't know how this would be for other businesses who also have the means to, you know, provide 100% parking space. Some could just choose to go with the 70. Otherwise, I like the flexibility aspect.
Mayor Spooner. Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-7.
Second by Dumbo, yeah, to approve. Proof of parking in commercial districts, this is an.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Dumbuia.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Von Slus.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Mayor Spooner.
Aye.
Ordinance 2025-3, once again, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the ordinance in front of you is the second reading of the Amendment to the Shoreland Land Uses. There have been no significant changes to the ordinance since you last looked. So we're recommending that you approve the second reading of that ordinance. In addition to that, as a summary publication for that ordinance, we're recommending that you approve that as well.
Since we're staff.
Mayor Spooner. Make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-3.
Second.
Second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All roll call. Everybody keeps calling me Kevin Veratschek, so I'm.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Dumbuia.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Rowan.
Aye.
Von Slus.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Mayor Spooner.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Mayor Spooner.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-3 summary publication.
Second.
It's, I think it's just listed as Ordinance 2025-3 summary publication. So it's more of the title rather than the action.
Referencing the ordinance.
All right, okay. All those in favor of Ordinance 2025-7.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed. On to Resolution 2025-145. Mark Duchesne giving Mr. Davis a break here.
Councilmembers. I'm more than excited to finally be here tonight to present final plans and specifications, set a bid date for the Northern Links Trail Project. This is a project that dates back over 15 years to around 2009, 2010, when the city first started planning trail and signal intersection improvements for the Trunk Highway 3 and Trunk Highway 21 intersection. So the map on your screen here shows that intersection of Trunk Highway 21 and Trunk Highway 3. Turn on the laser pointer again. So that intersection is here, the Grand State Hotel. You can see this project goes so long ago, it predates when the Grand State was in this area. But the crossroads professional building would be here in the southeast quadrant. So at that time, the city had planned for the two underpasses underneath Trunk Highway 21 and Trunk Highway 3, as well as a trail extension all the way along the south side of Trunk Highway 3 under the Canadian Pacific Railroad and into North Alexander Park. Due to budgetary constraints back in 2010, the project was truncated at Hewlett Avenue. The box culverts and the crossings and the signal and the intersection improvements at 3 and 21 were done. But the trail from Hewlett into North Alexander Park was delayed at that time. We've been working diligently the last three and a half to four years trying to get all the plans and agreements and parties that have authority over this project together. We just finally tonight, you approved a bunch of agreements related to the railroad. And it took over two years to get the railroad in there. Utilities within there right of way to agree to this project, but here we are. This project would complete that trail extension from Hewlett Avenue along the south side of Highway 3. We would dip south of Highway 3, just at the state-owned property there on the west side of the railroad. And we are proposing to open cut a box culvert trail crossing underneath the railroad. So the hang-up with the railroad is they are allowing us to shut the rail down for seven days. We will hire the railroad subcontractor to come in, remove the rail and the ties. Our contractor will then have five consecutive days to construct the box culvert, install the box culvert, bring the grade back up to subballast level. The railroad subcontractor will then come back in, install the final ballast railroad ties and put the rail back in. We have a total of seven days to get all that work done. Agreements with the end users, if we exceed those seven days and cause the two end users on this line not to be able to get rail, we owe them $2,000 a day. Also, we're paying the railroad some licensing fees and whatnot for this crossing. But this project will more or less complete the trail loop around town. Other than a short segment from the El Tequila, the Highland and Fairbent Road intersection up to Spring Park, there's an off-road trail system around about the entirety of town. So I know the Parks Department, former park director Panansky, I really tried to get this done before he left. That is the project in a nutshell. Project funding, we were originally awarded about $660,000 in federal funds for this project. The state had some leftover funds for the program that this project fell under. So we were awarded an additional $200,000 plus. So you can see we're up to just over 50% of this project is funded through federal transportation dollars. Total estimated project cost with contingencies in engineering and railroad fees and all that is just over $1.5 million. Again, pending approval tonight, we have a bid opening date set for June 18th for a council award on June 24th. Construction will depend on the contractor, but construction completion is more dependent on the timelines for box culvert construction. A couple of years ago, they were talking 15 to 18 months to construct a box culvert to this size. Back into the typical timeline. So we'll see what the contractor wants to do. They may construct everything up to the railroad and then just wait for the box culvert to be done, or they may just wait. We'll know more once we get a contract. I will stand for any questions, but otherwise, we are recommending approval of the resolution before you tonight.
Great to see this finally coming together.
When that construction is taking place, so basically you're going to make a big hole and put a box in and then fill it back up, right? Is that going to affect the traffic on Highway 3 at all? Okay.
There'll be construction traffic coming in and out, but.
Right, because I was thinking the third week of July is going to be pretty busy there with the fair going on.
I would be surprised if we're going before then.
Okay.
Else?
And so the trail right now is on the north side. Will it stay on the north side?
So there's two. So the trail comes from the south side in front of the crossroads building to Hewlett. And then you're right, there is a trail segment on the north side of Highway 3 from Hewlett that goes east to the railroad and then up the west side of the railroad. So this will continue that trail on the south side of the Highway 3 from the crossroads building and the box culverts underneath 3 and 21. We have had multiple discussions, and Chief Sherwin's still here and paying attention. We've tried numerous times with MinDOT to get some type of an enhanced crossing of Trunk Highway 3 at the Hewlett intersection. They continue to deny it. But this will, at least on the south side, provide a loop.
We couldn't raise the bridge.
It would be second or third on the raising.
It is a heavily used trail, though, so it will be a great.
I anticipate this loop will be. Alex Park, but also, like I said, it's almost around town, other than maybe. There's sidewalk, but a portion of it you'd have to be on street.
I just have a comment, too. I walk that path quite often, and I notice there's sometimes some spray painting vandalism. But I just wanted to commend the city because it's usually covered within a day or two. Good job on that.
Like to take credit, but I'll pass it on because we're in charge of those folks.
Mayor Spooner, make a motion to approve Resolution 2025.
Second.
Awesome, Resolution 2025-145. Prove plans and establish a bid date for the Northern Links Trail Project Contract 2023.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number nine bids, we have nonboards, commissions, reports, announcements.
Yeah, just some really quick updates. We, it was actually, I think the 16th was when we closed the ash tree removal program, the voluntary special assessment program. We still have a few more people that we are allowing to get in there as we're still putting together scope of work. But as of this morning and before anybody else was allowed, we were looking at 98 different properties with 179 different trees. So this is definitely something that the community has needed. And we're looking at what we can do now to help identify the trees that are not being voluntarily removed and specially assessed to get ahead of next year. A jumpstart on next year as well. I would like to mention that our next council chat will be on June 11th at 5:00 PM, not at 6:00 PM, and that we are going to be at the Great Hall. And we will be actually, we thought it would be library-based, but we have some different options from bar engineering on what we can do with the dams by the Wolin Mill on the Cannon River. And so we have some different concepts to present and get some feedback on. So kind of very timely to get things done there. And then why we're at 5:00 PM is because at 6:00 PM will be the second session of the Residence Academy, which I'm happy to report is filled at 12 people. So it'll actually be next Wednesday. We'll have our kickoff with the Residence Academy and go through kind of the history of Faribault as well as what does administration do, administration, finance, and HR. So fun, fun night of presentation there. And then we'll be kicking that off. And I would invite any of you to attend the Residence Academy sessions as we go. So, but we're looking forward to having a full group and seeing how we can do this first year.
House on boards and press.
I'll be on vacation next week, so I will not be attending the meeting. But I can cancel it if you like me to.
I have two announcements. So Saturday, we have, it's a busy day. Straight River Arts Fest will be at Central Park all day Saturday. I think it's 8 till 5. The Fest is also Saturday, and they're going to have ribs and.
Hey, thank you. I just have one. The past week, my wife and I and former mayor Veratschek and his wife and current community and economic development director, Mr. David Wanberg, went to Wurzburg, Germany. We visited with several cities from their sister cities. Seeing how governments, local governments work around the world and how they're acting to the public, how they set up, how they vote. One most interesting comment, the manager mayor from Turin, Czech Republic. I asked him, what are the two biggest concerns facing your city? He looked for about 10 seconds, and he said, housing and transportation. Unbelievable, 5,000 miles away, and they have the same problem. Not going to change it. Housing is a problem everywhere around the world. Interesting, it was a wonderful week, so. Anything else?
If you have not been to the Safe Summer kickoff with the chief and his staff, you're missing out. So just go. It is quite the spectacle, and great job, chief. It's awesome. It's this Thursday.
Okay, at this point in time, all those in favor. Adjourn.
Still moved. Second.
Ross, second by Dumbo, ready to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.